Welcome to our meeting of January 6th. We ask you to stand in the Kaiser kids there. Our students are gonna say the pledge for us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You guys did a nice job. The motion show that all board members are present. Ms. Green is sitting in the audience for us tonight. We're all here. Next is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 16th. Can I have a motion please?
Please don't make a motion for the president.
Brett Schmiedel support.
Your own favor.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. Next we have a school recognition month of January and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Rice.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see everyone here tonight. If you did not know, this month is school board recognition month across the state. Roseville has chosen tonight to honor our school board members. Each of our school board members will be recognized by a different school. And tonight, we are gonna start off with Ms. Ruth Green. Oh, I'm sorry. Kaiser will be starting with Mr. Matt McCartney.
Good evening. I am Kelly Torpey, principal from Kaiser Elementary. We initially invited our kindergarten students to come to honor Mr. McCartney and we want to thank all of our board members for everything that you do. So we do have a whole family, the St. Peter family came with us today. So, and do you wanna tell us who you brought with you today?
Danielle.
The whole, this whole front row here is their family. So raise your hand if you are with the St. Peter family today. So thank you so much for coming out tonight. Alright, so we went around interviewing students randomly throughout the building at Kaiser in grades kindergarten through 5th grade, asking them what they thought for education was. So we are going to play this for you.
A school kind word lets all the PTO moms know what the news are, the news is.
I don't know.
A school board is maybe what you learn.
School board is something where...
A school board is what people write on.
Helps you be good and be nice and learn.
A school board is one of these things.
A school board is where you get family and children to come over and learn.
I don't know.
School board says be kind, um, safe and res- wait, be kind, safe, respectful, and you're responsible for your own stuff.
A school board is where we give presents to people where they don't have presents or any for anybody.
A school board board does.
I don't know.
It helps children who like, who are like, need like, if they wanna go to like gym, they can get like fitness and, and like all like vitamin A and B and C.
It's telling people to be healthy.
Some stuff that helps you, helps you listen and be kind and safe and respectful and responsible.
School board, uh, look for schools like we do school.
I think I'm like, I don't really know, but I think it goes like those kinda friends and like they give us those.
Thank you, school board.
Thank you!
Thank you, school board.
Thank you, school board.
So Kaiser had put together a little something for you that represents our school and to show our appreciation to you for all that you do.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Alright, a bag full of goodies. Fantastic shirt. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ella, Danielle, and Faith.
Very good.
Did I get that right?
Yes, very good. That's really good.
Take notes.
Next up, we have Huron Park Elementary with Donna Ambrose, the principal, and they are honoring Ms. Ruth Green. Smile Ruth, smile Ruth.
Hi, Mrs. Green. Thank you for your continued love and support for our students. We appreciate your commitment to the Roseville community and its schools. We appreciate all that you do for us. To show our gratitude for your continued support, Huron Park has some special guests that are here to present you with a few things. I would like to first have, this is Isaiah Green, who better to represent our school but these are Ruth Green's grandchildren. We'd like to give you some flowers. And then, Mrs. Bradley and some students from Roseville Community Schools painted this picture. It portrays the cow jumping over the moon for you. I'll give it to Grandma. And our helpers, I'll let them, excuse me, but my helpers today, like I said, Ruth Green's grandchild, this is Isaiah Green, he's in our GSRP program. This is Elijah Green, he's in the 4th grade. And this is Natalia Green and she is in the 5th grade. And they just wanna maybe say something. Do you wanna say something? And who did you bring?
Isaiah and Natalia.
Who came with you?
My mom and my, and my sister.
I brought my cousin Elijah, Isaiah, Auntie, and my cousin Lele.
Isaiah, you wanna say something? You wanna say something Grandma? Oh my god, they're so cute.
I...
Give Grandma a hug. Thank you, Ms. Green. We appreciate every...
Thank you Grandma.
I know, I saw it.
Oh, is it a cute little picture? Oh, cute is that?
Next up, Mr. Michael Anderson. And he is being honored tonight. Steenland and Principal Chuck Felker, come on up. Mr. Anderson, some of our students have put together a little poem for you and a little gift. I wanna say thank you to Ms. Gibson and Ms. Del Pierre. It's their students that came up today to, to honor Mr. Anderson tonight. So, alright, you guys ready? Who starts?
Green is for the dedication you give each day, blue is for your patience in showing the way.
Orange is for your work and caring style, yellow for the way you always make us smile.
Red is for the love that you have touched each year, you're a very special person just like the star that's clear.
You place learning tools in each school helping us when things start up.
Mr. Anderson, you're a magnificent and marvelous board member.
Magnificent.
Thank you for being a member of Roseville Community Schools.
Alright. Thank you very much everyone. Do you any, wanna say where you, who you came with?
My name is Sarah and I brought my parents.
The Abby and Dave.
My name is Nadia and I brought my mom.
My name is Cameron and I brought my mom.
My, my name is David and I brought my parents.
My name is Evelyn and I brought my mom.
My name is Andrew and I brought my mom.
My name is Matthew and I brought my mom.
Next board member to be honored tonight is Mr. Alfredo Franciscone, if you can come on down. And Mr. Donovan Steck from Coment Elementary, the principal there. Hello, how are you doing?
Good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Donovan Steck. I am principal over at Coment Elementary School. It's somewhat difficult with the time constraints at the end of the year to have students here tonight, and I'm here on my own, representing the students, staff, and parents of Coment Elementary School. We set aside this night each year to represent and honor our board, but more specifically we're here to acknowledge Mr. Franciscone for all he does for our school district. I think I'm in a dead spot here. We put together some Coment swag for Mr. Franciscone today. First of all, this fancy Coment bag, and I'm gonna set it down here because there are a few things inside the bag. Next, we have a water bottle for when you're working out outside and it's nice and hot. We brought you a Coment tee shirt. If you'd hold that for a second, I want to... We also have our Coment Wildcat who is wearing an Imagine tee shirt so they can go out together. And I'll put this back in the bag for you. I'll take that from you as well. We also have inscribed a small pamphlet of paper, sticky notes, things of that nature. It says, "Thank you for supporting Coment Elementary School, Roseville, Michigan, 4066." It's a little pen and paper set, so we have that for you. And then finally, and kinda most meaningful, our students in 4th and 5th grade wrote some letters of thanks for Mr. Franciscone. And there are several in here, I'm only gonna read one of them to you because no one wants to see me read 10 different letters. So I'm gonna pick one, it's somewhat of random here. It says, "Dear Mr. Franciscone, I've never been anywhere like the school board before and I don't know if it'd be a fun job, but I figured that you liked doing it because you've been doing it for so long. Anyway, I thank you for your long service for our city and for the loss of your time, personal time, for all of us students. I see you as a farewell model for all children. Sincerely, Scott Barnett." There are several other letters in there as well. Once again, on behalf of Coment, we do thank you for all of your time and service. We know you're not in it for the fame and fortune, but because you really care for our students and we really appreciate you. Thank you very much. Mr. Steck, who'd you come with tonight?
Uh, I brought myself.
Beautiful.
We're with you Donovan, we're here.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Joseph DiFelice, if you will come on down.
Come on down.
And representing Patton, are the students from Patton and Ms. Jean Williams, the principal? If anyone saw Jean Williams last year, it was pretty hard to top, so good luck Jean. You wanna stool and stand down?
No, this is too hard, so we'll, um, just hang on. The students have really worked very, very hard and been able to survive at the very end. We have a little bit of audience participation though, because we're really worried that we all celebrate the great attributes of Mr. DiFelice. So when Franklin holds up his sign, I need everybody to say, "Forever we hope," with practice.
Forever we hope.
Now, when Trayden holds up his sign, I need us to read the sign all together. Trayden, hold it up!
Eight years!
We have our cards. Yes, without further ado, I'd like to introduce the pro of the Patton Elementary School students who are going to perform.
The school board is trying to, they work all day. They come into this room and it is here they stay.
Now, there's Teresa, Alfredo, like Matt and Ruth, so important to us all, and that is the truth.
With sound the sirens, call the police. Clap mine down, let's celebrate Mr. DiFelice.
Please sit, my darling. You guys sit, sit, sit. You don't get by clothes, go with them.
Let's celebrate the hats that you wear in a day as symbols of the roles you continue to play.
How many hats can we wear a day? How long have we been here?
Eight years!
How long will we stay?
Forever we hope!
Let's count the hats, we'll start with one. It's the Patty received when he had his son.
Number one, Dad.
How many hats can one wear a day? How long have you been here?
Eight years!
How long will he stay?
Forever we hope!
He works hard all day with his hat number two. A hard hat for safety without one is a trip.
How many hats can one wear a day? How long has he been here?
Eight years!
How long will he stay?
Forever we hope!
Next, we travel eight years back in time, appointed to the board within decade and nine.
In appointment and election, then re-elected for six more, he's another seventeen year we all know.
How many hats can one wear a day? How many hats can one wear a day? How long has he been here?
Eight years!
How long will he stay?
Forever we hope!
He presents such a sight, we cannot look away.
The wearing of hats is not about saying, the challenge is deciding which one makes your heart safe. Please wear this hat proudly.
Thank you for all you do!
Now, the title of the prose is "The Hat With The Hats."
Hold up that book again. Can you see him on the cover? I would like to thank you guys very much for presenting this beautiful, the hats and the beautiful, what's in there? Oh, the thank yous, okay. Thank you very much. And I enjoy being on the board and I wanna thank everybody tonight. My wife is right here and she supports me with everything I do and I'm very grateful for that. She puts up with a lot. And thank you all very much.
That's an absolute question.
What is that tree? Oh, and my colleagues, my colleagues, they're the best. The administrators, they're the best. Our teachers, look at all our teachers here. Let's give our teachers a big round of applause today. Thank you very much.
We're gonna introduce the students and they are going to share who brought them.
I'm Devon Miziek and I'm, and I'm brought by my mom and my grandma.
I'm Trayden Green and I was bought by my dad.
I'm Franklin Zuny and I was brought by my dad and my mom.
I'm Kaylee Wigan and I was brought by my mom, aunt, stepmom, little brother, little sister, and stepmom.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I came with my wife tonight and my baby Joey. I know, I'm gonna get it, I'm just kidding. Great job guys, great job.
Next to be honored is Mr. Kevin Swit- gee, so Kevin, if you'll come down here and I know that Dr. Adams is from Roseville High School is so excited to follow all that. It's always tough for the secondary schools to follow the elementarys, but Dr. Adams?
I'm doing great. I'm Pat Adams, the, with the high school, and you might think it's a challenge following all the wonderful children, but I've challenged myself on behalf of our kids. I wrote a song, I'd like to present it to you today. So... No, I ain't gonna have it. On a serious note, it is really my honor to present to you on behalf of our kids at the high school, for all you do on behalf of, not only the high school, but all the kids in the district. Your consistent support, your professionalism, in my opinion, is exemplary and I appreciate that, all the support you've given me, our students in the high school. I asked Mr. Vercayne, the students that run the Panther down our store, to put a little bag there with some swag, as Donovan would call it, and on behalf of our students and for all you do, here's a little swag for you. There's a bunch of stuff in there, there's hoodies and shirts and glasses and decals and everything like that, so enjoy. No, 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 no. And thank you for all you do. And I spared you the song.
Thank you, thank you. As, you know, I say it every year, this is probably one of my favorite evenings as a board member and I, and I think I can concur with everybody up here. This is why we do what we do. We do it for the kids here, the parents that, you know, support everything with, with their kids and, you know, the tremendous staff and administrators. So thank you again for this great honor. Thank you.
Who'd you come with tonight Kevin?
Our final board member that we're honoring tonight is our board president, Ms. Teresa Janey, if you can come down Teresa. And to honor Ms. Janey, we have a ton of people from Dort Elementary and they are led by some staff and their principal, Mr. Mike Zimmer.
Well, we know you live right around the corner from Dort, right? And you've been a Dort family for, seems like forever. A long time. Forty-two years, a long time. We just wanna say thank you for your continued support, not just at Dort, but throughout the district, and not just you, but everybody. But we're gonna give you a special thank you and we have a special presentation and a bunch of presents from the 15 Dort Dolphins. We're rolling deep today, so we're, we're ready to go to, to honor you and say thank you in our own special way. So I'm gonna have our 4th and 5th graders, I got a couple of them, they're gonna come up and lead the way. We got Joey DiFelice, Alexis Smiths, Carly Cutlip, and Jaden Sparks. Joey, take it away buddy.
Ms. Janey, the students at Dort have made you the "It's Worth It" box. Some days, our job is draining, we can't seem to win. We find ourselves complaining and our minds begin to spin. It's not all fun and laughter, we whisper "I am thrilled," but then the child smiles and she looks at you.
So we are filling this box up with cards and pictures and love. Look back at all the lives you've changed, your impact shines so bright.
Take this out on stressful days when your brain is screaming quit. This box is a reminder, every child we reach is worth it. These cards are from kindergarten and 1st grade.
Thank you for yesterday.
These card... These cards are from 2nd and 3rd grade. Next? These cards are for...
Thank you for every day.
Thank you. There, there's some presents here. We got some cannolis in this one. They, they stocked your Facebook and that's all they could come up with. And then we got Alex Anani bracelet with some charms that represent Dort and the work that you do. So, boys and girls, yeah, here we go. Tell you what, let's...
It's kinda heavy isn't it?
Why don't you guys say your... Boys and girls, go ahead and say your name, we're gonna pass the microphone down. And say your name and who came with you, okay?
My name is Eric Watia and I came with my dad and brother.
My name is Austin and I came with my mom and dad.
Mom and dad, where are ya?
Right there.
My name is Erickson, I came with my mom, my dad, and my brother. I'm Carly Cutlip and I came with my mom.
I'm Alexis Smiths and I came with my mom and dad.
I'm Kayla Vanusack and I came with my sister and my mom.
My name's Shabby and I come with my sister and my mom. I come with my mommy and my daddy.
I'm Colton and I came with my mom and sister.
I'm Lamon Atia, I came with my dad and my twin brother.
I'm Joey DiFelice and I came with my dad and my mom.
I'm Cutlip and I came with my mom.
I'm Madison Gibbons and I came with mom. And I came with Crystal, Crissa, and Colton.
You know, guy back there is my son back there and he does videos, right? You see him at school sometimes? Well, he went to Dort. Can you imagine that guy ever went to Dort? Look how old he is. Can you believe that? Guy down up there on the end was a custodian when we were there. Look at that, can you believe that? Me and a custodian, whoa! So we're pretty familiar with Dort, but I wanna... So we're pretty familiar with Dort, but I want to thank you guys very much. I can't wait to read all the nice cards and nice things you said, and thank you for coming out tonight, and we'll be sure to come and visit you for Reading Month. How's that again, okay? Thank you very much for coming out, I'm glad it's not snowing, okay? We'll try to give you a snow day someday soon, okay?
As the Dort students are leaving, I just want to take one more opportunity to thank all the board members for everything they do, thank all the schools for their presentations tonight, can we have one more round of applause for these kids?